City council meeting of June 13, 2024 to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and recite the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, Madam Mayor, in advance if I'm coughing or I've got a sinus thing.
A lot of allergies going on, contagious.
Or that I'm trying to get your attention or.
Okay, Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
This is Ray.
Here.
And this Lisa Atchison is here. Okay, everybody's here, so we don't have to excuse anybody. Moving down to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak at this time? If you do, go ahead and head on up to the podium. Any members on Zoom or? If you would like to make a public comment, raise your hand or open your mic, open your speaker. Okay, hearing no additional public comment, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I think that we have an addition, don't we? Yeah, okay, that's all right. The addition is to add 7D motion to authorize the city manager to complete due diligence for property purchase, including but not limited to required analysis studies and reports as necessary up to 50,000. Would you like to speak on that, Darla?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. As I'm securing things, everything I've done so far is below the limit that I can do as the manager. I'm starting to get quotes that exceed that, so I thought one lump sum should take care of all of it.
Okay, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, let's do a roll call. Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. This is Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. Six zero.
Okay, consent agenda. Any, we need to make a motion on that to accept the consent agenda. Would you like to add something or take something out?
A brief discussion on C, the North Kent Community Enrichment Donation, in case there's folks that don't quite understand what that's all about.
Do you want to make that like seven, seven E then?
Do that or do a brief.
Discussion items?
Well, we could ask Darla to.
Do it now?
Yeah.
That way it doesn't take it out of the agenda and change places.
So the North Kent Community Enrichment, it used to be called Cedar Springs Area Parks and Recreation. It's comprised of the city of Cedar Springs, the Public School District, Algoma Township and Solon Township. And most recently Nelson Township is back in the mix. They pulled out for two years, but now they're back in. So each of the communities, townships in the city all contribute $7,000 to North Kent Community Enrichment for all the programs they put on. There's still fees for some of the programs you attend, but this takes care of like the administrative piece of the two staff people. They're both part-time to administer all of the programs.
All right, is that, anybody else want to move or talk about anything? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, let's do a roll call. Mrs. Powell.
Yes. Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr.
Marvel.
Yes.
And Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes.
Okay, moving on to action items. Action item 7A, motion to appoint Jacob Puckett to the city council and to fill Angela Winner's vacant seat. I need a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, I think we're going to have a discussion on that motion. So we just had to fill in a placeholder person to maybe be able to discuss the motion. So let's have a discussion about all three candidates. You want to start, Mr. Gross?
Are you going to discuss them in general or his only?
I think only, yeah. No, we're going to discuss all three, but we had to have a, we had to have a person in there to vote on.
Okay.
Yeah.
My feelings are that they were all qualified and I was respecting one of them that got onto the board. I think based on our discussion so far, that we will have to make it on whom we figure is the best. I believe for me, it's Michael. But I don't know as though that was what you were requesting, just a discussion. So I think, I think that's, I think that's where it would be for me.
Okay, do you have a reason for that?
On you, it's a difficult one to decide. The only thing, and I would hate to see any of them walk away with the idea they're not going to try it again.
Right.
Who knows, after the first of next year, there may be an awkward seat. You never know.
July.
Considering our track.
Well, but the way it's going, but so I would encourage those to do not get the seat, to don't walk away. So, but I think probably some of his background leads me more to believe that, that he has a little more qualification than the other two, although it's a tough decision.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Well, you, Mr. Marvel.
Yeah, I think all three of them are fantastic. Your resumes are, all of you are very qualified. It's going to be really tough. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, this seat's only one year, right? 2025 is when this seat's.
I think it fills her vacant vacancy, which would be.
2025.
Yeah, I, I, she filled who's, right, yeah. Yeah, so it's up, it's only a year, yeah.
So I'm thinking, you know, I don't, I mean, it matters tonight who gets this. I'm a big guy on let the people decide too. So like next November, I'd like to see all three of you, you know?
Right.
And it's, it's going to be a really tough decision. I was looking over things and doing some background and based on some of the interview questions too, my gut feeling is to, I think I'm going to stick with Miss Elizabeth.
Okay, thank you.
How about you, Mrs. Powell?
Based on resumes and interview, I would thoroughly support Mr. Maxson to be our next city councillor. I would also, like Brandon, say, please, folks, if you don't get in here tonight, start coming to the meetings and learn, get some experience about how this goes because there will be more elections and more folks that may have to move or something. So, but my vote is for Mr. Maxson.
I was not, you're, you're calling me now, yes, okay. I did not understand. There was a meeting today at five. So I'm going off just the written.
At the resumes application?
I read the resumes and Mr. Maxim is the one with the most experience with things like government. I mean, the Flatburt Community Library, the Gartner Public Museum, the Muskegon Area District Library, West Michigan Works, he's volunteered with elections. I, it's just, if you're going to be brand new, having some understanding and experience of how that system works is helpful.
How about you, Mrs. Race?
I do agree that it's important to have some history, at least some background and because this is going to be very complicated. And it's, I'm learning every single time I sit down in the seat, so. But I have a different feeling and I just feel that Mr. Puckett is my, my appointment at this time.
Okay, I think all three of you did extremely well. It's hard to answer questions when you don't know what they are going to be, for one thing. For another thing, it's, it's hard to sit in front of people and know what you, but I am kind of going a different way too. I'm going, I went for passion. And I thought that Jacob Puckett was the most passionate about the position, so that's kind of where I went in my area. I loved, I loved the experience that Michael had and I loved the the experience with, with the community that, that Elizabeth had, but just the passion that I saw was with Jacob. So Darla, can I ask you a question? We have three to vote on. So if we vote and, and are we just voting yes for one person? Is that what we're doing? Is that what we have to do?
For Jacob Puckett. So you complete that motion first.
Let's say that, yeah, okay. And then you can tell us after that. Okay. All right, so do I have a, we had a second, so we're going to vote first on Jacob Puckett. So Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
No.
Mrs. Powell.
No. Mr. Gross.
Oh.
Mr. Marvel.
No.
And Mrs. Atch, Ms. Atchison votes yes. So that is four to two. Okay, so I need a motion for the next person, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint, I'm sorry, Miss Elizabeth Abad, Abaj, is that how you pronounce it? Abaja? And then the second part, Kovar, to Angela Winner's vacant city council seat effective June 14, 2024.
Can I give a second?
A second.
All right, Mr. Gross.
Oh.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes no. Ms. Ray.
No.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Or no, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Conley.
No.
I think that was six one.
One five.
One five, sorry, thank you. I'm glad you can count. All right, I need a motion from the next candidate, which would be Michael Maxson. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to appoint Mr. Maxson to the vacant city council seat.
Second.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley. Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
No.
Mr. Marvel.
No.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Ms. Atchison votes no. So that would be three? So what do we do in that situation? Mrs. Johnson, should we, should we?
Full discussion until the decision is.
Okay. Okay, so we can vote yes for this, for a different candidate, candidate than what we voted for? So do we have to vote for all of them again or just the tie?
Yeah, I, yes.
Let's make a motion for another candidate. The same one.
Discussion since it's a.
Let's make the motion for Michael Maxson to appoint him to Angela Winner's vacant council city seat effective June 14, 2024.
Question?
Yeah, I need support first.
Support, second.
Okay. Then let's discuss.
I expressed, I expressed mine simply because of the contacts it's had. It is a tough decision. If I had one of them to fill in for me, I would accept either one of them. Hint, hint. So it is a tough one. It's just the, having dealt with the systems a little bit more, that doesn't take away from the other two. So, but that's my feelings.
Anybody else?
I agree with Jerry. I think dealing with the municipality can be confusing and difficult, but we always have to deal with the facts and the laws. And I believe that Mr. Maxson has the experience in that sort of thing. And I, I would appreciate his intelligence and experience with all those kinds of things that we know about, but not everybody else who hasn't sat here for year after year to realize you can't argue with the facts, you know, there's, it's just something we have to deal with. And I believe probably he has the most experience in that.
I'm, again, I appreciate what you're saying about passion. I have no doubt. But with passion, like, I guess I would have liked to have seen you run because you could have just pulled a petition recently. And so then, and I wasn't here to see the passion, but I am reading the list. And when you tell me that you've worked elections, when you have done previous volunteer experience with the middle school and Feeding America and with Kent County, you're an election inspector. To me, that just says, and especially if we're only going to have you for a year. I, I think it's, that's my, that's my feeling on it. And we know we're going to have a new person to counsel in November because there's two people running and one of them is not an incumbent. So that's going to be that much not experience already there. This is a, you've been doing this quite a while, Madam Mayor. This is a heavy lift. I mean.
So that's, that's my.
Yeah. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Marvel?
I, yeah, it obviously appears that, yeah. I, I, I agree. I do agree that Mr. Maxson, you're, you do have a little bit of experience. And one thing that did stick out to me is the confidence in your, in the way how you answer your questions. And yeah, I, I appreciate that. So. And Mr. Puckett, your, your passion too. And the way, one thing I love seeing on the resume is your volunteering that you do in the community. It's really tough. It's really tough. And I, I like, I completely agree that I would like to see you all run next November. So let the people decide. So.
Any more discussion?
There, I was just going to say, there may be, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure, but I think there's some openings on some of the boards.
Yeah.
So just as though like.
Right.
We can, definitely, I will look for, for, you guys were all great. So we definitely will look for openings other places and offer them to whoever doesn't get this. And like, like they said, run, please. You know, and, and I know probably people didn't think about it until later, when there were opportunities. So do we have any more discussion?
I would just like to add the short term.
Yeah.
Is what slipped me a little more in that direction. He's had a little more, I won't say expertise in it, but he's had involvement like that.
Right.
I feel that either of the other two with two or three, four meetings along the line.
Yeah.
In the future, so please run, would do very well with it. And I'm serious about that. It's, it's, you just never know. Okay? I don't want to be discouraged by not getting at this time room, so.
All right, we ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Who are we?
Oh, we're voting on Mike, Mr. Maxson.
Mr. Maxson.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. Powell. Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yeah.
Mrs. Race, no.
And Mayor votes yes. So five one.
Thank you.
And.
Some experience, okay?
I have your info, we have information too, so we'll get back with the other ones. Yeah, so we'll be hounding you. It's a run. But thank you so much for coming.
Is there an opening? I feel like we haven't filled Jerry's.
We just finished, we just filled, it's on the, it's on the thing. We're going to vote on it, but yeah. So I'm sure there will be openings.
That's a great.
If they sit next to Jerry, it'll be within a couple months.
That might be as hard as one yet.
In all honesty, yes. The last two that have quit and moved out of the area is sat next to me, so I, I don't know what the deal is.
Okay, Ms., Rebecca's going to give the oath to you.
She's got you ready to roll.
Okay.
I, Mike Maxson, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedars. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member to the best of my abilities.
I do.
Well, welcome. And we will see you at the next council meeting. And if you need to talk to any of us, it's public record. You can get ahold of us. Yep, and also the staff is very helpful. City manager, if you have questions, you know, she's could probably know the answer more than I am. So, yeah, and you can stay for the rest of the meeting, all of you, all of you. But once again, you guys are all great. I was so happy to see that we had three people and sad that we only had one seat to fill. So, yeah. Not yet, Jer, we still need you. Okay, moving on to action item 7B, motion to approve ordinance 251 and ordinance to amend section 32-532 pertaining to basis for determining front yard requirements of chapter 32 zoning of the court of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs. This is our second reading. Would you like to begin the discussion?
Just a reminder or refresher. So we, we looked at this last month, second time tonight. This all kind of stemmed from, we redid the sign ordinance not too long ago and awnings, according to planning commission, really felt that awnings weren't a sign. So we, that's why we moved it to this section of the zoning ordinance. So just a little blurb about awnings.
But thank you to the planning commission for that.
All right, can we get a motion?
I make the motion.
That's presented.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I, I just, awning, if you have an awning, one thing I was wondering, it wasn't clear to me, if you have an awning that's a combination sign, is that covered under this new ordinance?
This is the awning portion, the requirements. Does it have to be attached to the building? Does it need supports, you know, externally? How far away from the building it can be? That's all this. You can still put a sign on it, but you need to meet the sign ordinance restrictions.
First is the awning and then is the rest, okay?
So the idea is like you can have an awning because it's an awning and you need to have an awning for sun or whatever. And that's not a sign.
All right.
Or symbols.
Mrs. Conley. Yeah. Mrs. Powell.
Yes. Mrs. Race.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Mrs. Atch, Ms. Atchison votes yes. Moving on to action item 7C, motion to approve resolution 2024-17, a resolution to award the bid for the fire department turnout gear. Ms. Falcon, would you like to talk on that?
Sure. So we put a bid out. We're hoping to get more than two, but only two came in. So that's what we have to work with, right? So initially, we're looking for 10 sets of turnout gear between the two bids that were submitted, axes and irons, $52,054.40 and Phoenix Safety Outfitter, $43,862.10. We have $56,000. So we've been saving for this. Every year, we put a little bit in reserve just for turnout gear. We have $56,000 in that reserve for, for this purchase. So the recommendation is to add a couple of the individual turn offs also. We, we have money for all of it.
Want for the, what do you want the motion? Like, there isn't an amount of money or I mean, at least.
Resolution 2024-17.
You don't need the in amount not to exceed or?
Nope. I mean, the, the resolution says we're going with Phoenix Safety Outfitters.
Solution has the amount in it already. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm used to the like in an amount not to exceed.
Yep.
On that, the other 13K that we're not spending, is that just going to be kept in that fund for the next, for 10 years down the road?
I can answer that one.
My goal would be to continue putting capital away as we go through this rather than doing all these big purchases all at once. We do planned budgetary stuff with a five-year plan and a 10-year plan and a 20-year. So that's my goal is to keep all of these things under control so we're not, because things are spiraling out of control cost-wise.
Sure. And it's not like you can go buy turnout gear off the shelf at Meyer. It's not a thing. I mean, and we have a truck we're going to need to buy, right?
And the regulations are such, last I knew, they only have a 10-year lifespan.
I thought I heard that this week, so.
And that's the 1850.
Yep.
Will there ever be grants available for some of the stuff?
There are when we go through that, but the hurdles are difficult.
Uh huh.
And we try to grant as much as possible as we try to get through this one. And there's a little things we can get instead of going for bigger things.
Okay, thank you for working on that.
Case again where the government sets up a standard for all and the standard for the 10-year replacement is set up for the larger departments that fight many, many more fires than what our firefighters do, thank God, that we don't have to. So that they set a standard and it's 10, regardless of how many you fight, whether you're 50 or five. So it's a, it's a 10-year lifespan is all the, the gear may be safe beyond that point, but it's just state regulation.
What do we do with the old gear?
Most of the gear will be turned over and go to other areas that don't have any requirements. We go through, that's one of the things I'll talk to Darla about. They go to like valuable. We'll keep as, you know, if not necessary for turnout gear for firefighting, we have some people that are not struck for firefighters go through. Problem is, it's a tricky subject to keep that gear when somebody grabs it not knowing, knowingly not compliant, that's a bad idea.
So it's pretty much, it's worthless.
It, it's definitely. It, it's definitely something that the, the requirements to stop something.
In value, it's not worthless.
Yes.
Being used is worthless, that's okay.
Jerry. We need you, Jerry. We wouldn't know that, we wouldn't know that.
We could've explained that to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, room with questions?
Question? Is there anything that you need from the city council to help you with being able to get access to more grants? Is there any like resolutions or any statements of support or? I, I know you are, but I mean, sometimes I know there's, in order to have this grant, you have to have a declaration from this place, or you have to show that you have mutual aid agreements, and therefore you need a resolution that there is a mutual aid agreement in effect, and that if we haven't done that piece of logistics, it makes it harder for you. Well, I mean, I just. That, I mean, that's a thing sometimes.
Okay, do, we haven't made that motion yet, have we? I need somebody to make the motion, please.
Make the motion as presented.
I'll second. All right, we'll call Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yeah.
Mrs. Race.
Yeah.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes, six zero. Okay, moving on to the discussion item event, um, cornhole tournament. Oh, sorry, did I, oh, I forgot we added that. Ah, seventy. Man, I thought we were just moving right along.
We are moving along.
All right, let me find seventy. All right, okay. Motion to authorize the city manager to complete, compete due diligence for property purchase, including but not limited to required analysis, studies and reports as necessary up to fifty thousand.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
We'll call.
That's what I got.
Mrs. Race.
Yes. Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes, six zero. All right, now we can move on to the discussion item community event, cornhole tournament, July thirteenth, um, to close Maple Street, eleven A M to ten P M, first reading.
So I, I know this is first reading, but if you approve, I would really like a motion for this, just due to timing. So this is the same day as the Cedar Blitz Bike Race, so we're already closing Main Street.
So that seems like.
Be on Maple Street, so it probably makes sense to close Maple Street as well. Um, but Cedar Springs Brewing Company would like to have a cornhole tournament um, and use part of the street as their setup for the cornhole tournament, so. Day.
What is the library gonna do for parking?
Um, James, and they actually have the community, I think he's leaning towards closing the library. It's a Saturday, they're only open three hours, but they have rented the community room. And he was going to announce to the whoever's renting it to have all their people park on Pine Street in that city parking lot and take the sidewalk into the library.
It'd be great, but they're not gonna be happy, but what can we do?
I know.
Have to walk from Pine Street over to the library.
Through the gardens, I mean, yeah.
I mean, is there stuff they need to drop off?
Yeah.
Could they get through maybe to drop? What time is the cornhole tournament?
Eleven. To ten P M.
And what time is the event on? The, uh, garden event?
The community rental? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if there's a lot of heavy stuff to carry, we might wanna check with that, but.
Can at least deliver it before.
Yeah. See if they can deliver it before that.
And the night before. They're doing, gonna do in the community room at the library, set up the night before. Then you're just parking wherever and walking.
What do you guys think?
Is it still accessible for people? Cause I don't know what the event is, but I know that this time of year, a lot of, huh?
Handicap, that's all you mean?
Yeah, because I know, like, we're planning on having my son's open house next year, renting the community building, room for the, and we have a lot of people that need handicap accessible. I mean, that's part of why we're gonna do it there instead of at our house. And then if you said, I'm sorry, you, you can't, you have to walk three blocks, that would be a problem.
So where exactly, do we know where exactly they're gonna do it? The cornhole, where they're gonna set up? Yeah, but I mean, are they gonna set up like right at the street or be, you know, do we even know?
I think it stops before the first drive.
Oh, they're about to stop. There is a drive before that?
Right.
Yeah.
So there is a drive, there is a drive, there is a drive there that they can get into the parking lot. The concern would be, are they gonna save that parking for the same people who are gonna use the library?
Handicap. I mean.
But that's what I'm saying, it's, you know, so they've created parking, they've created parking there, but is it beneficial to the, uh, I wouldn't be beyond the point of putting a reserve for library parking only.
Can rope off that entrance to the library for the party only.
Turned, yes.
I was gonna say, can you like make that arrangement with Dave that, like, look, this has already been, these people have rented this space, they're paying money, and they should be able to access it.
I agree.
I agree too. They, they even said last year, they had it, the library's parking lot was full before anybody even could, before they even opened. So I think it's gonna be an ongoing problem.
James is becoming more aware of, you know, several events that we have, and we, we've told him like how to look on our calendar, so maybe he can say the community room is not available this day due to, you know, a community event going on. So he, he's learning too. I mean, that was a mistake, maybe that.
We wanna have the community room not available so that a local restaurant can have a cornhole tournament.
Depends on the community event. I, I don't know. I mean.
Just so they have parking.
Program.
Well, it's, it's the same day as the Cedar Blitz Bike Race. Oh.
The bikers to, you know, participate in the competition. It just gathered something else there, and that's the only part that bothers me. Is it promoting his business or is, which is promoting the community? So how much can we block off the rest of the community from using the parking lots and stuff? I'm, I'm content with the idea that if we block it off so the library can use it.
Yeah.
Same.
Same.
Is the back drive?
Drive where they could pull in there and round and park and it can turn around, come back, all at the same drive.
Yeah.
But they're just gonna have to keep from blocking traffic to come through there.
I, just to be clear, I would not support the idea that we're going to say to the library, you cannot rent out the community room for someone because there's going to be a cornhole tournament. I mean, that's, like, I just don't.
I think that was part of our discussion right now, was not wanting to do that and working around it, so I think that's where we're going with it.
Right. Right. So, um, could, uh, we're, I know that, um, Ms. Falcon is looking for a motion here to, 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 um, let this happen. Um, I think that she understands that we're, wanna do the library parking, so I think that, do we need to change the motion or do you think that motion is okay?
I think would be acceptable based on it's the event. We're just putting a stipulation on it is all, so.
Motion?
Well, I don't, it's the part about closing off the street that I think is problematic.
No. I, I support, you know, having the cornhole thing as long as they can get in the back row there and, and as long as the brewery reinforces that too, that, that parking is there, then I'm, I'm all for the brewery doing that. I mean, it's, it's for a day.
Yeah.
And we have to also make sure that the library uh, community room renters have a place to park and could get in there. I don't think that would be hard. For sure.
A, a sign or something that just says for community parking only or.
Block it off.
Dave would even put a sign up a page, you know.
Okay, can I get a motion then?
I'd make an emotion to allow for the, uh, brewery to have a cornhole competition that day with the closure of the street with the, uh, understanding that library will have their parking.
Uh, roll call. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yeah.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
All right. Um, item B under discussion, name Pocket Park at seventeen North Main Street. Recommendation from the DDA is Gerald M. and Amy J. Hall Park. Would you like to begin the discussion on that, Mrs. Falcon?
Um, has gone to the DDA for a couple meetings now. We, we put some polls out on the DDA's Facebook, um, got some suggestions, narrowed it down at the last DDA meeting, and then the DDA's motion was, um, the motion you have before you're there, Gerald M. and Amy J. Hall Park. Um, I did reach out to Amy and asked if she would approve of this name as proposed, and she said yes. So up to you for discussion.
It's a little wordy, even if it was Gerald Hall, Gerald and Amy Hall, it would kinda thin it out a little better, Jerry and Amy Hall. But otherwise, I think it's a great idea to honor him and her with this park.
I somewhat disagree. Did name a treatment plant after Jerry. As much as I respect Jerry and Amy, I feel that there's been some other persons that have sat in the areas of leadership here in, in the city. Uh, Linda Hunt, Ronnie Murlington, uh, John Tousink, that also should be, you know, memorialized somehow. And they have not been in the past. The fact that we have already created something for Jerry or Gerald, uh, I, I feel that we are overlooking some people that have been important to this city in the past. That's my opinion, so. And I'll bet the DDA didn't even think about any of them, because a lot of those people in the DDA were never around when they were on the board.
Yeah, you're correct. Um, uh, it was brought up that, um, that we had the wastewater treatment plant, um, memorialized for Jerry. I think it's, um, a lot of it is because it's been so recent that he passed away. Yeah, so I think that, but, yeah, um, because they did put it out on a, on the, um, DDA site, and we did get a lot back for Jerry.
How many of them know?
Exactly.
Exactly, I know, yeah.
Treatment plant was.
Right.
Right, they, they might not know, you, they might not know, and I, and I definitely agree with you that there are other people that we can memorialize that haven't or, or even recognize that haven't been recognized from the past that we probably should think about.
And if we don't name it after somebody, it could be the citizens park or something similar to that that belongs to entirety of the city.
Park. There's no big rush, you know, it won't be done till September.
Yeah, we don't have to make a decision. That was just there, we, we, that was just there.
Oh, these, my opinion. And we're asking for discussion, and I think, I think there's a lot of room for discussion here as to whether it should be or shouldn't be.
Right. Yeah, I always love your opinion. I appreciate it. Yeah, that's why, that's why we still want you around, Jerry. How about you, Mr. Marvel?
Man, I gotta trust your guys' judgment, cause I haven't really been around that long, and all those people you just listed, I'm not familiar with, so I think it'd be cool to name it after somebody that's made a big impact in the city, and I trust your guys' judgment, so.
Unfortunately, Brayden, they're history, and I'm history.
Right. We're not naming it after you though.
No, I don't, no, not expecting it, so.
Yeah. All right, Mrs. Race, do you have a?
I, I do agree that, um, because of the wa- wastewater treatment plant already having his name on it, I think we can look for, um, some other options.
Um, I like the idea of it being for Jerry and Amy. Uh, it's not just Jerry, it's Jerry and Amy. And I, Madam Mayor Hunt, I think you have done a wonderful job, and I do think we need to get your name on something. I also think Amy Hall has done an awful lot. She was the, um, president of the library board once upon a time. She has been in a whole bunch of committees, and they have given an enormous amount of time and money. Jerry's fund for his, his memorial fund was for the Y A collection at the library. I feel like we have, and we look at John Tousink, and we could look at, um, Jim Sharon, and those folks all gave a lot of service to the community. Jerry and Amy have given service. Jerry was the mayor and he was on city council, but he was also the DPW director. He's the one who wrote the grant to get the water treatment plant. He's the one that put the pipes in the ground. He's, was on the DDA, he was on the fire department. He was on the school board. I, I don't know if, I don't know if there's any other people who have done those many things. And so that's why, to me, it's, and he was part of the getting the grant, being willing to put out the money to get the grant to do that. And he was part of getting DDA with Michael money so that they could do stuff. So that's to me the, the piece of it, of why, but I would love to look at other places to put some other folks' names on things.
He was a big part of the CBDT and the, uh, building of the library and guiding folks through all that, the library and amphitheater.
The fire station.
Yes. Just a great, great man, and, um, not that other folks didn't do wonderful things, but the volume of things that he did over the last fifty years is incredible.
And then when you throw in what Amy did also.
Well, let's, uh, um.
Cause I didn't know those things, and that's why I appreciate you guys being on here.
He also was on the committee for, when the school board, that we built the middle school. I mean, our names are on the middle school because we built it when we were on where I got, and that was a huge piece of him saying, this is what the building needs to look like, because, right?
He was the Keystone Cop too.
All right, well, let's toss it around more in our minds, and, um, we don't have to make that decision tonight, um. So we'll just, I think that there, there needs to be just a little more time and thought put into this. Do you guys agree?
I do.
All right, let's move on to communications. Extra communications?
Nothing extra, but if I can talk. Nothing extra, but if I can talk about one of them. Uh, letter D twenty twenty-four Ax My Tax ballot initiative information. This is in the packet, and I highly suggest everybody look at it, read it. Um, I'm sure this is not all the information available on Ax My Tax. This is the first document that I've read. Regarding this um ballot initiative. And honestly, it scares me to death. Because if I said, you know. You can have this for free, do you want it? Of course I want it. But eliminating taxes, if you look at page three, just for example. The largest source of revenue. The single largest source of revenue to our general fund is our tax revenue. If we had to survive without that, this city would look a whole lot different. So, in this initiative, uh cities bring in two point six billion dollars. The replacement money would be. One point eight billion less, a sixty-nine percent loss of tax revenue.
Falcone, can I ask a question? Has this been, is this going to be on the ballot? Has it gotten enough signatures?
I don't know, but there's a lot of people promoting this. This is from MML.
I mean, I've heard about it for, they tried to do it in the last cycle also, but are they, do they have the signatures? Is it on the ballot?
Not on the ballot in August.
Which means it's not on the ballot in. Okay. Understanding of like how close they are to getting the signatures? Because that, by the way, is a hill to climb. I mean, having collected signature, but I don't disagree with you, Ms. Falcone. It's it's. There's a really great book, but it's quite wonky. That's A Libertarian Walks Into a Bear. And a little town in Vermont thought it would be really fabulous to have zero taxes, including for a fire department. Or for managing bears. And to have no laws or rules regarding feeding bears. Or what you have to do with your trash. Or whether or not you can plonk yourself down on someone else's property. And the town burned down. Because, you know, and then the bears ate some people. So, this idea that. We should just eliminate taxes so we can be free. So, who's gonna pay to make it so you can vote? Make sure that your water's safe. The girl from Flint. It's not feeling it. Who's gonna make sure that the fire department shows up? Because they should just show up out of the goodness of their heart. At three o'clock in the morning, when a giant tree has landed on your house, been there. Right? And then they should pay for all that equipment themselves. Right? Because, you know, y'all got pocket change for that truck, right? I, it's, it's the whole concept of government. Is that we collectively put in money so that we can provide the services that people need to be safe and healthy.
Yeah.
It's still gonna be tax money that we're supposedly getting.
Right.
We're not gonna take a break, because they've got to make it up on sales tax and so forth, if I understand it correctly. You're still going to be.
Initiative.
But that's uh, that's part of what I understood, that they were gonna have to do it on sales tax and stuff to pay for this stuff.
I just thought as a city, pointing out that our tax revenue is the single. Largest source of revenue to the general fund. We provide a lot of services with that. And the replacement revenue is only thirty-one percent, so. I.
Replacement revenue, that's what they figure they're gonna make on on increasing sales tax and stuff. It's not, it's not.
Free.
It's not an easy.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, this packet is through the MML. And reading through it, I think it's a little biased. And I've read the initiative, I've. You know, I can't say I'm a hundred percent in agreement with everything. I think the point of Ax My Tax is that it eliminates property tax in the state of Michigan. And a group of people have come together and basically said, like. We're tired of being so taxed to death, you know, because property tax is super, super high, you know, for some people. And it's like, on page seventy-five here from the MML, the first point is it's gonna uh increase unemployment. If a business doesn't have to pay property tax. I mean, wouldn't that raise employment? So, my point is, and I don't want to get into a big discussion here, I think this is a little biased in our packet. And I I would just encourage all of you to read the initiative, and. I mean, has anybody else here read? Yeah.
I read it when they tried to do it last time, too.
Is it the exact same literature?
Certainly looks like it. I mean, could there be some little tweaks in it? But they, it's, they submitted the same thing to the state to get the signatures.
Yeah.
The signatures last time either.
Yeah.
And they'll come and scream at you about why you must sign this. And.
Yeah, let's move on to the department reports.
Thank you, Darla.
Lot going on lately, um, just I'll hit the highlights here. I've had a lot of phone calls. There's a couple pieces of property, not even city-owned, but they're for sale in the city limits, and like. I get multiple phone calls every week, like, what can I put there? What is it zoned? All these questions, which, not a problem, I I hope I'm. Giving somebody information that can make a decision and, you know, purchase that property and and make something there, so. But just thought it was kind of odd. There's a couple parcels that. They're on people's radars, so, anyway, um. I attended the Kent County Quadrant meeting a couple weeks ago, where the county has a lot going on. Each department kind of. Had a couple minutes and highlighted what their department was working on. Uh, Ms. Powell was there with me. They have a lot going on. Um. I hired a DDA coordinator, Teresa Lance. She started um last Monday. And she's kind of training under one of our um public work seasonals. Uh Larry's kind of showing around. Really just to take care of the plants and watering along in the DDA district specifically. Um, and then the Wednesday night uh concerts at the amphitheater. She's in charge down there, so. Um. Main Street Park, we had our pre-construction meeting for that. Uh, looks like they are tentatively gonna start uh the week of June twenty-fourth. So we should see some activity going on there shortly. Um, finally got some prices on security cameras. I hope to bring that next month to you for a decision. Um, a lot of areas in the city, we we do not have security cameras, and we really should. We really need them. So we're kind of working that out internally. Um, hope to bring that to you next month. And then yesterday, um Rebecca Johnson and I attended uh Developer Day through The Right Place. Um, so this year was a little different. Last year, we went on a bus tour and kind of showed people around the city. Um, this year, we just, um, we had designated areas where developers could come and meet with us. Um, I thought we were there to promote the West Street property, but. People came to the table and they wanted to add, they had other questions about other areas in the city, so between the two of us, we kind of. Put our heads together and answered their questions, and it was really good to see the interest. From developers in, you know, looking at Cedar Springs, so. Keep your fingers crossed, something will come of that, so. That's all I have.
For you. You heard anything recently about the apartment complex?
Um, the la- the last I heard from Doug, one of the main owners there, it was this fall. Ground, so I'm assuming in the next couple of months?
Past the Eagle, then.
Assuming yes. Yep.
Okay, Department of Public Works. Is Tanya on?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I don't have a whole lot. They came in last week and put the well and pump six, or sorry, the pump and well six. Had that backwards, so that's installed. Uh, we did um brush pickup last month. We ended up bringing in sixteen loads of brush. We hired a new DPW. Public Public Works uh worker. Sorry, I'm tired. Um, Russ Johnson, so he started with us last week. It's working out really good. He seems to like it. And I think that's really about it. Like I said, not much.
I have a question.
Yes, uh, question for you, Tanya, hold on.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel.
So uh, there's between the carpet place and. The restaurant, Kelly's Restaurant there on Main Street. That just got me this last year. There's a massive divot where like there's an access for something there.
Yeah, that's on the list to be taken care of. That's not ours. Um, Michigan Paving did that project, and that's up to them to have it fixed.
Awesome, thank you.
But it is on the list for them to fix. It's on their checklist.
So they're aware.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work.
Yep, have a good night.
You too. Um, we have Sergeant Pope's um report in our packet, yeah. And the fire department, Troy.
Uh, you have my reports. We're going through. It's been pretty much a normal day-to-day event for the fire department and calls. Um, we have finally completed the roof. Um. All of that stuff has been completed on the outside. Uh, we've had quite a few big rains, and we've had no leaks that I can see. Um, there's some stuff that they've completed on the inside yet. Um, but uh, I'm hopefully looking forward to the report, once we get everything completed, and so I can present that to you in going through.
Good job.
Thank you for the approval of the turnout. We'll try to put it to good use and get everything straightened out. That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to add. Yes, ma'am.
The fire truck, of course. Is is anything going on with it?
The fire truck has been returned to um the station. It is there. Uh, we are working on getting all the pieces and parts back. Um, we're missing a few pieces here and there, and then we, once we get all the inventory straightened out on the engine or the uh Model A, we will start. Quoting out to see if we can get some repairs done for the rest of it.
Thank you very much. City clerk.
Been a busy, busy time for us. We are working on August election, so that's most of my report tonight. Um. We have, we'll be mailing out the AV and permanent ballot people, um. Their ballots the week of June twenty-fourth. We have our public accuracy testing scheduled for July fifteenth at four P M. That's here at City Hall. Um, happy to report that we have all fifty of our shifts fully staffed at this point for election, so that's for August. We're. Well on our way to November as well, so um, that is a big undertaking and a. I'm glad to have it done early, so I can't say enough thanks to the inspectors, because really, um, we can't do it without them, so. I I thank each and every one of them for all of the time that they've put um towards elections. Uh, next week I will be at the MAMC Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Conference, so we'll get a lot of good networking um and education at that. Any questions?
Darla, is there anything from the um anybody else that's not here that we need to know?
No, I'm, I think Emily put her report in your packet. She's been pretty busy as well. Um. They're heading to the UP for a long weekend, so.
Council comments, Mrs. Conley.
Uh, I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Maxim for coming to join us. In our. For the next year, really, please don't leave again, after, not that you left again, but. So thank you for that, and thank you to the people who stepped up and threw your hat in the ring. And that's a big deal. So I'm sorry I was not here for your interview. I did not understand that was happening, but thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Appreciate all of the applicants that came in for the open seat. Uh, serious about each and every one of you. When election comes up, put your name and uh. Get in, get into the process of being elected. It's very important for the community. And uh, and and it does take a change in faces up here once in a while for different perspectives and views. And uh. I would appreciate it. Uh, it was a tough decision, us deciding who it was going to be. And like I said, it's short term and there's experience. Uh. I think it would lead to being able to get in and sync a little bit quicker. But you're fully capable of being on this board, so. Uh. I think there's been some good such discussion. And uh. And I will tell you that I respect Jerry and Amy greatly. And it's not because I don't. I just feel that there are some other people that probably should be honored for past services. Uh, irregardless of, and there was many things that some of those I mentioned did. To financially and uh assist this city and its growth. So, but uh, whichever way we decide to go, the park's still gonna be a great one, so. Okay, it's good for the people, good for the community.
Mr. Marvel.
It was a great meeting, and it's a really good discussion. I love the city. I love, I love the growth, and. I was super excited to see three candidates uh interview for this, and I like some competition, so. I, yeah, I can't wait for next November, so. Best of luck, and like I, I'll say it again, I wish I could have voted yes for all three of you. Um, but. Only one, I can only vote one yes, so, and just thanks to everybody for what we do and. Looking forward to what the city, what the growth of the city and what's in store ahead, so.
Mrs. Powell.
As Darla mentioned, this was kind of a strange thing. We went to this uh Kent County Quarterly, and they made this uh. Um, presentation about how people are going into other people's deeds on record. And changing them or doing some crazy stuff with them so that they own your home. So they highly recommend you go on the Kent Access Kent County. And go to that site that has something about deeds. I haven't done it yet. I should have done it a long time ago, I guess. And uh, get your deed registered or uh somehow, so nobody can come in and mess with your deed. So I, and they said it's getting to be quite prevalent, so it's. Yeah, I know. So I I have been mentioning that to everybody, so it's important to do that. Anyway, welcome, Mike. As you can see, we have a heck of a good time up here. Hard work, but good people to work with, so thank you, everybody.
Mrs. Race.
Uh, just a good meeting. Always get things done. We're excited to see the new faces around here. Um, I think that the biggest thing is to learn out of this is to. Don't stop doing, don't don't stop believing in what you want to do. Um, you know, try to listen to some of the YouTube uh meetings, just. Get familiar with, um, I mean, everything is out there, so just get familiar as much as you can, because when you come in and sit down. It's just a lot, but we're all here to help out, and we've had some new people along the way recently, and. We're very excited to have them here, and we want, we want you to stay, so. Um, just try to do the best you can to educate yourself for the future, and we'd love to see that, so. And, yeah, good, good, and welcome. Do you go by Mike or Michael?
Mike.
Mike, okay, all right. I just like to make sure, so congratulations. And uh, thank you too for going and doing what you do and. Troy, looking fancy tonight. Ah, is he golfing again?
Yeah, well, thanks, everybody. Um. We're getting really goo- good at this, don't you think? Having to do these inter- interviews, wow, it's it's a lot. Um. But thanks a lot for um showing us that you love your community and wanna wanna reach out, and you want to volunteer, and you want to help out, you know? It's always helpful. Um. I got to go this week as mayor to the Cedar Springs High School and do some mock interviews. And that was really fun. I had a great time. Yeah, family's kid child was part of that. So it was really fun to, and they were like, wow, how did you get the mayor? Well, um, it was uh a class through um. Cedar Springs and with disability advocacy, and it. I actually um had a disability advocacy. I actually, um, the head of disability advocacy is one of my customers, so she asked me to do it, so. So it was fun, but I was glad I could, um, actually, um, go and represent the city. Um, and then I actually, when I was interviewing, I, I let the kids know what all the city actually has. Would have openings for jobs, so let them know what everybody does, so and then. A couple of them asked me how you got to be mayor and I said, well, you start by, um, being on boards and committees and then you end up on the council and then. Hopefully your, your council members have, uh, confidence that you can do. Do the job, so that's, that's how I, uh, kind of went about that and it was fun, very fun. So, um, once again, thanks to the whole staff. Um, I appreciate all that you do and, um. Thanks for, thanks for coming to the meeting. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say thank you to showing up and doing that and giving your time in that way. For that group of folks that often don't have someone from this area. Staying, showing up.
But I was also impressed that they had that class because of the gap between school and real life sometimes isn't met, so. I really appreciate that class. So, uh, no further business. We're gonna adjourn at eight twelve PM.